Listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. Welcome to the journey.
Welcome to today's Bible study and review of Numbers chapters twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Without further ado, we're going to open up in prayer and we're going to begin. Heavenly Father, may the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable on thy sight. May you forgive us of our many sins and shortcomings. We see how you dealt so sternly with the children of Israel during their murmuring and during their complaints. That was completely unacceptable on thy sight. Father, we as Christians have emulated or copied or practiced the same thing. You have been more than good to us, excellently gracious, and yet we still find something to complain about. Father, forgive us. While we are under the umbrella of mercy, let us take advantage of it and stop the things that we used to do. Let us go and sin no more. May your Holy Spirit dwell in each and every one of us, the teacher, Lennon, as well as myself, and those who are listening in. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. May your Holy Spirit dwell on all of us. Amen. Okay, beloved, we're going to review Numbers chapter twenty and twenty-one. Beloved, on the other side, we'll either have it all wrong or we'll have it all right. But here is where we make that choice. Here is where we make the decision. And beloved, I'm praying that each and every one of you, including myself, is choosing the Lord Jesus Christ. Because without him, we could do nothing. Now, that's primarily aimed at the Christian, but it goes for the whole world. Because he's the creator and the sustainer of every single us. Beloved, as we traverse through this life, we're going to encounter many obstacles, many challenges, and hindrances to our faith. But what we have to do is stand strong, stand firm, and rely on him. Because under our own steam and under our own power and might, it won't get done. I can assure you, I can assure you, under our own steam and our own power and under our own might, we will fail. The apostle Paul said, "Oh miserable rest that I am, who shall deliver me from this body of death?" So if the great apostle Paul, and I use the term great because he was a man in hand by the Lord Jesus Christ, if he knew that his body was subject to the failings of sin, surely you have to know that we are, and again, let me personalize it, I am subject to failure. And since I know that I'm such a failure, let me live out the rest of my days leaning on him, leaning on his everlasting arms, so he can get me through. Beloved, just want to ask this question. Are you and I able to enjoy the presence of the Lord and the wealth of the land here in this 21st century and not be separated from the Lord? The answer to that is a resounding yes. Beloved, I say it all the time. We can have wealth in this world as a Christian and not be out of God's favor. Here are some of examples of those who had this world's wealth, yet they were true lovers of God. Abraham, Genesis chapter fourteen, verse fourteen. "And when Abram heard that his brother," and this is speaking of Lot, "was taken captive, he armed his trained servants, which were born in his own house." Once again, this is Genesis chapter fourteen, verse fourteen. "Three hundred and eighteen, and pursued them unto it." Beloved, Abraham could not have been poor and have three hundred plus servants. Job, and Job chapter one, verses one and three. "There was a man in the land of Uz, whose name was Job, and that man was perfect and upright, and one that feared God and evil." Verse three. "His substance also was seven thousand sheep, three thousand camels, and five hundred yoke of oxen, five hundred sheasses, and a very great household, so that this man was the greatest of all the men of the east." Yes, you are considered great because of your integrity and your reputation, but by golly, you can't have all that cattle that Job had, being financially destitute. So that also added to his greatness. Now, please, those of us here who is living from paycheck to paycheck or in between, don't think that we can't be great. Yes, we can. With whatever we have, let's bless the Lord. Let's bless the Lord with whatever we find ourselves in. Because if we don't be murmurers and complainers like the children of Israel were, we will have the favor and the fervor of God, our Father. Beloved, as we're moving on, finally, we have Joseph of Arimathea. He himself was Jesus's disciple. Let me read that. Matthew chapter twenty-seven, verse fifty-seven. Once again, Matthew chapter twenty-seven, verse fifty-seven reads as follows. "When the evening was come, there was a rich man of Arimathea named Joseph, who himself was Jesus's disciple." So beloved, without getting caught up in the thought that can I have a good paying job making forty, fifty, sixty, seventy-five dollars an hour and still be a genuine man or woman of God? Can I hold a supreme title which pays me according to my schooling? I got a PhD? And can I hold that down and still be a man or woman of God? And beloved, without me answering, we just got the answer from scripture itself, showing that from both Old Testament as well as New Testament, there were men and women who were financially well in this world, but still had the love of the Lord. Because they didn't let this wealth have its reign over them. Neither should we. Beloved, as we're entering Numbers chapters twenty and twenty-one, the children of Israel, including their forty-year wonderings, they are about to now occupy cities on their way to the promised land, the land of Canaan. The land of Canaan. Beloved, that is a beautiful picture of you and I. We are pilgrims, strangers, pacifiers, and we occupy territories of ourselves as we're passing through this wilderness. That is why you and I are not to get caught up in stressing about owning land, houses, or any other property. Now, we can, let me rephrase, let me rephrase that. We should own property, lands, houses, because that's an exercise in wisdom. For in doing so, you're looking out for the future, we're looking out for the future of our children. This is the Proverbs chapter thirteen, verse twenty-two. A good man, and you've got to understand that a good man, as described in the scripture, is one that belongs to the Lord. Proverbs chapter thirteen, verse twenty-two, "A good man leaves an inheritance to his children's children, and the wealth of the sinner is laid up for the just." As we touch Proverbs, I'm sorry, as we touch Numbers chapter twenty-one, we will see the end of Proverbs come true, where it says, "The wealth of the sinner is laid up for the just." Because as the children of Israel conquered these various kings and their lands and destroyed them, they took their lands, possessions, all of the wealth that was associated with them. So again, beloved, we see how scripture is very, very true. That is why we're encouraged to live by the word and let the word live in us richly, 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 richly. Now, a person may say, "Now, wait a minute, Scott. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Are you on some kind of an oxymoron trip? Are you trying to be an intelligent idiot, a smart dummy? First, you tell us not to stress over owning property, and then you're telling us that we should own property. Make up your mind, bro. Make up your mind. Own property, yes. Stress over it, no. Again, own property, yes, but stress over, no. Listen to Numbers chapter fourteen, verses thirty-five to thirty-seven. Once again, we're looking at Numbers chapter fourteen, verses thirty-five to thirty-seven. This is God encouraging the children of Israel into the land of milk and honey, of which you know would be a prosperous land that will provide all of their needs, all of it. And God is encouraging them to occupy these places. So if God is encouraging them to occupy these places, there's nothing wrong with it. But remember, stressing over it means that you are living just for the land, the property, the stocks, the bonds, the 401Ks, the cars. No, 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 and no. Don't stress for these things. Because yes, as we just wrote in, as we just read in Proverbs, when we make our exodus, these things will not go with us. But yes, we can leave them to our sons, our daughters, as an inheritance for them, that they will not, and listen to this, stress over trying to find somewhere to live. Yes, beloved brethren, us making provisions for our loved ones to have inheritances is beautiful because it causes them to not have to stress as to where we're going to live and what we're going to have and what we're going to own. So again, beloved, you can stress in both directions. You can stress over having it, and you can stress over not having it. Numbers chapter fourteen, verses thirty-five to thirty-seven reads as follows. "I the Lord have said, I will surely do it unto this evil congregation that are gathered together against me in this wilderness; they shall be consumed, and there they shall die. And the men which Moses sent to search the land, who returned and made all the congregation to murmur against him by bringing up a slander upon the land; even those men that did bring up the evil report upon the land died by the plague before the Lord." So again, beloved, please understand that it's all right to have possessions in this world. Just don't get so connected to it that when it comes for times of departure, you will not stress over it, but you will live to do what does say of the Lord. Please make that your goal, your desire, your hope, and your ambition. Please, please, and please some more. Beloved, as we're continuing our review, there was a song that John Lennon wrote, and I just want to touch on this really quick. There was a song that he wrote concerning our potential promised land. And what I mean by our potential promised land, I'm talking about heaven or paradise earth. And in John Lennon's songs, it went as follows. Imagine there's no heaven above us, only sky, only sky, I'm sorry. Now, those lyrics added further doubt to those who already were doubters in an attempt to make a liar out of the Lord Jesus Christ, in addition to some other blasphemous things that the Beatles said. So I'm saying that to say this. As the children of Israel brought that evil report to the congregation and God made them get destroyed for it, so John Lennon was met with an untimely death. Because he made a felicious or false charge, saying that there is no heaven, and telling people to imagine. When you imagine something, beloved, you daydream about it, you think on it, you dwell on it. So when he used the word imagine, he was absolutely, absolutely speaking in blasphemous terms when he used that. And let me tell you, beloved, no human has the right to bring anything opposite of what the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit says. Because Jesus clearly said that there is a heaven. Listen to John chapter fourteen, verse two. "In my father's house are many mansions. If it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you." Acts chapter one, verses nine and ten. "And when he had spoken these things, while they beheld, he was taken up, and the cloud received them out of their sight. And while they looked steadfastly toward heaven, as he went up, behold, two men stood by them in white apparel." So when our Lord says that there is a heaven, believe it, irregardless of what the majority, what the crowd, or even someone popular says. Listen to Acts chapter seven, verse fifty-five, this confirmation by a man of God, Stephen. "Act seven fifty-five, but he, being full of the Holy Ghost, looked up steadfastly into heaven, and saw the glory of God, and Jesus standing on the right hand of God." And finally, listen to Luke chapter twenty-three, verse forty-three of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, speaking of there being a paradise on earth. Luke twenty-three, forty-three. "Jesus said to the thief on the cross, 'Truly I say unto you, today you shall be with me in paradise.'" Beloved, one more scripture, Psalms thirty-seven, verses three, five, and nine. And Psalms thirty-seven, verses three, five, and nine reads as follows. "Trust in the Lord and do good, so shalt thou dwell in the land, and truly you shall be fed." Commit your way unto the Lord. Trust also in him, and he shall bring it to pass. Evil doers shall be cut off, but those that wait upon the Lord, they shall inherit the earth." So again, beloved, there were questions that are brought up. There are reports that are brought to our attention or acknowledgement, and these can even come from God's people. Remember, the children of Israel that were saved from Egypt, these were God's people. And here, ten of them are bringing a slanderous report, a report opposite of what God said, because God said this is going to be a land swan with milk and honey. Now, yes, there were giants, and beloved, there are giants in you and I's way to the promised land. But remember, greater is he that is within me, that is the Holy Spirit, than he that is in the world. So no matter what you're facing, health, opposition for family, friends, relatives, your employment, no matter what giant you may be facing, Jesus will conquer them all. And he showed us that the greatest giant that man has ever faced, and it's that monster called death, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ overcame that as well. Remember, he raised Lazarus from the dead, who was in the grave for four days. He already started decomposing. The reason why our Lord allows him to be in there for four days, so that there will not be any murmurings down throughout the centuries, saying that, oh, Lazarus was just fainted, or he had passed out, and he was in a coma. And there are people that stays in comas for months up to years. No, because people in comas don't start decomposing. So Lazarus started decomposing. So that showed that he was dead, 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 and dead some more. Yet our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ revived him from the dead and gave him a fresh, new body, one that wasn't, um, um, let's say, riddled with that which caused him to die in the first place. So again, beloved brethren, we do have giants. We have giants before us. There are giants, and please let's not misunderstand it. A Christian's life is not the la vida loca, the la vida loca, the life of Riley life. No, a Christian will have trouble, sorrows, heartaches, and tribulations. Please understand that. We will. Please do not think that becoming a Christian, you will escape the pains that are upon us. We have debt problems. We have health issues. We have, um, financial issues. We become angry. We become despondent. All these things a Christian suffers through. Well, a person will say, well, shoot, I was suffering from that when I was in the world. Why become a Christian? If you mean becoming a Christian, meaning I'm going to have to suffer these same things, then why even bother? Beloved, let me use this as an illustration. As I work on the train and I go into various stations, I see homeless people on the platform, on the train as well, and even lying on benches and all this other, all these other maladies. Now, let's use the one that's on the train. Now, the homeless person that's on the train, is he getting a salary? And he's on that train for eight plus hours. Let's, let's just, let's just give it a, a nice figure. He's on the train for twelve hours. I'm on the train for twelve hours. Now, which one do you think is better off? And I'm not down, uh, uh, playing anyone, and I'm not belittling anyone. But which one do you think that as we spend those twelve hours on the train, the homeless gentleman, as well as myself, which one do you think is better off? Surely you have to say, I am, because I am getting a salary for being on that train twelve hours a day. He's not. So beloved, we are in this world with wicked, wicked, godless people. Be hired, so to speak, by the Lord Jesus Christ, or better yet, as Lennon and I were discussing this week, be the Lord Jesus Christ's servant. Let him be your master. Because as Bob Dylan's song says, you gotta serve somebody. And beloved, as brutal as this sounds, the answer to that is truth. You are serving somebody. If you're not serving the Lord Jesus Christ, you're serving a devil. Period. Person may want to argue that point. That's fine. But I won't engage in you with that argument. Because first John helps us to appreciate in this, the children of the devil are made known as well as the children of God. Adam and Eve in the Garden of Eden, they started out as God's children, but they ended up being satans. Beloved, when we come into this world, once again, we either belong to the, well, when we first come into the world, scripture says, "For all have sinned and come short of the glory of God." So when we come into this world, we're sinners. And I'm going to tie this in with what we're going to learn tonight in Numbers chapter twenty. While we're in this world, beloved, or when we're born into this world, we are born sinners. We are born sinners. Numbers chapter twenty-one, where I'm going to tie this story. But how do we get rescued from our sins? By looking to the Lord Jesus Christ. And it's as simple as I'm going to show y'all in Numbers chapter twenty-one of having salvation with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Numbers chapter twenty, verse one. Here we have the death of Maryam. "Beloved, it is always painful to lose someone, and to be quite frank with you, I'm still reeling. This December will be three years that my mother has made her exodus, and it still hurts." I'm laughing. I'm laughing with, I guess, the thought that I never thought that my mom would check out. Never, 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 never did I entertain that thought. Never did I think that my mother was going to make an exodus from this world. And when she did, I was tore up from the flow-up, as the saying goes. The only reason why I was able to handle her homegoing is because my mother left a sterling example of what a Christian is supposed to be about. That is why I am handling it as well as I'm able to. But beloved, when you lose someone, let me share this with you. It's okay to cry. It's okay to weep. Remember. Remember, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ in John chapter eleven, scripture says he wept. Let's take a quick look at that. John chapter eleven. And it's the shortest scripture pretty much in the whole Bible, but it carries with it such weight and such power. We're looking at John chapter eleven, verse thirty-five. Listen to these words. Listen to these comforting words. For those of you who may have recently lost someone. John chapter eleven, verse thirty-five is words of comfort for those who have lost someone recently or are still feeling the pain of someone that they lost time ago, of someone that they may have lost time ago. John chapter eleven, verse thirty-five, Jesus wept. Now, this is the creator of the universe displaying tears, not just tears. Scripture says he wept. And beloved, when you weep, oh my gosh, it pretty much incorporates all the muscles within your body. The reason why I'm, I'm so focused on that is because our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ was showing us that he identifies with us when he wept. Now, he didn't weep as Lazarus was one that was lost. Because Lazarus wasn't lost. Scripture says that Jesus loved Lazarus. And when our Lord loves someone, you're in like Flint. But our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ wept to help you and I to know that, yes, these things hurt, and oh my gosh, they hurt. So if you cry out in public, or even cry alone, let me share this with you. Let me share this with you. Again, when my mom first made her trip home, and after we went to bid her goodnight, when I got back to work, I'm glad that I work where I work, I work in a conductor's cab, and pretty much I'm in there by myself. I'm in there alone. And at this particular moment, it was a good thing. Because I did lose my composure. I did weep. So beloved, if my words is not comforting you, then let the words of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ comfort you. Because know this, know this, that if you lose a Christian someone, man, are you good to go. Because y'all are going to have a relationship that this life has never bought, never bought. Okay? I'm going to, we're going to be with a relationship that will be everlasting. It will never be filled with heartaches, sorrows, we'll never lose that one. For all of eternity, we'll be with those who we love. Now, I love you, beloved ones, absolutely. And I love my wife and my four children. My goal and my desire is for all of us, and I use the word us because I'm included in this transaction. My desire is for all of us to spend eternity together, having a relationship that will never, ever end. So once again, beloved, we had the death of Maryam in Numbers chapter twenty, verse one. So once again, beloved, we had the death of Maryam in Numbers, chapter twenty, verse one. And this is something that this is something that, um, the children of Israel experience, but yet they do have the hope of seeing her again one day, especially those who are servants of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Moving down to verse thir- uh, three of Numbers, chapter twenty. Beloved, I'm gonna bring something to our attention. It said, "The people told with Moses, and they said, Would God that we had died when our brethren died before the Lord?" And we'll use the word would, wish. In other words, they're saying we wished we had died when God destroyed our brothers in the wilderness. Beloved, there's an old saying that we've all been exposed to. Be careful what you ask for, 'cause you just might get it. Listen to Numbers, chapter twenty-one, verse six. Listen to God granting them their wish. Numbers, chapter twenty-one, verse six. "And the Lord sent fiery serpents among the people, and they bit the people, and much people of Israel died." So again, beloved, be careful what you ask for, 'cause you just might get it. There are times when all of us may have experienced things and said, man, I wish I weren't here. I remember when I was in high school, there was this young lady. And she said, well, I didn't ask to be born. We were just, uh, talking about a, uh, subject. She said, I didn't ask to be born. Well, with the exception of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, none of us asked to be born. But now let me tell you, in my nearly sixty years of life, it hasn't been no picnic, but I'm glad I'm here because under the grace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, I have an opportunity to make this, uh, life of sorrow something good. So beloved, if you get stressed, go to the Lord and say, Father, I'm stressed, I'm hurt, I'm disappointed, I'm mad, I'm angry, I'm A B C. And if you are able to, move on up to Z. But never wish that you were dead. Never, beloved. Please, please. Never wish that you were dead. When you're going through things and God is allowing you to live, know this, that he's allowing you to live in order for you to make things right between God and yourself. Now, speaking, speaking, speaking personally, when the times when I was super duper depressed and wishing some really naughty things, it was because of my sins. The children of Israel, it's because of their sins that they're wishing that they have died. Because like I said, when we move to Numbers, chapter twenty-one, they're going to get their wish. So beloved brethren, you know, my, my mother taught me, make your accounts with God very short. And let me advise you, make your account with God very short. In other words, shorten your sin list. Well, Brother Scott already have a list that's so short you can barely see it. Well, make it even shorter so that you will not see it. Because beloved, believe you, a lot of times, we get into the super depressed state because of the things that we have done. Listen to Romans, chapter two, verse four, speaking of Paul, and, and God extending to us loving kindness and his long suffering, what it does for us. Romans, chapter two, verse four. Do you despise the riches of God's goodness and forbearance and long suffering? Knowing that the goodness of God will lead you to repentance? Beloved, let me read to you, um, this reference note. Again, this is speaking of the people that desired to die at the hand of God. Beloved, Amos reminds us that the day of the Lord God, and that is day, if you say, I wish I was dead, because again, when you're saying that, you're pretty much out of God's will. Amos reminds us that the day of the Lord is a day filled with darkness and wrath. Listen to Amos, chapter five, verses eighteen through twenty. "Woe went to you that desired a day of the Lord. To what end is it for you? The day of the Lord is darkness and not light. It's as if a man did run from a lion and he was met with a bear. Or he went into a house trying to escape one danger, leaned his house on, leaned his hand on the wall, and a snake bit him." Verse twenty, "Shall not the day of the Lord be darkness and not light, even very dark, and no brightness in it?" Joel even mentioned something concerning the day of the Lord. Joel, chapter one, verses fifteen and sixteen. "Alas, for the day, for the day of the Lord is at hand, and as a destruction from the Almighty shall it come. Is not the meat cut off before our eyes, yea joy and gladness from the house of our God?" Beloved, once again, when we're engaged in things, or doing things, or living a life, or living in a way that's not pleasing to God, naturally, you'll be wishing that you were dead. But beloved, don't. That's why you're still alive today. I say it all the time. The reason why all eight billion of us are still alive is because all of humanity has two responsibilities. And the two responsibilities of all mankind goes as follows. Those of us who are Christians, we are supposed to help those who are not Christians to become Christians. And those who are not Christians are to become Christians. That is the reason why all eight billion of us worldwide are still alive. Brother Scott, that's rather narrow. Okay. Since you know it's narrow, then why don't you come on and go through the narrow gate? Because broad is the road that is leading off into destruction, and there are many on it. And I was on that road. And I don't want any of y'all here, none of you, nor any of your loved ones, to be on that road, because it's an ugly road. Oh yeah, it's filled with pleasures, like I always say, sex, drugs, and rock and roll, and you're having a high all the time. But beloved, I'm only gonna be doing that. I'm gonna do it to the day I die. Okay? And when you die, you're not gonna be doing it. Did you hear what you just said? I'm gonna do it to the day I die. And then when you die, scripture says, "What shall the profit of man if he gained the whole world yet loses his own soul?" What will you have? Tell me, what will you have if you do it for the next one hundred years? You will have nothing at the end of the day. Again, the illustration of the homeless person on the train. He rides the trains all day long. And he comes home with no paycheck for his, his, his efforts, so to speak. I do. So beloved, please live for the Lord Jesus Christ so that you can have that glorious paycheck in all of eternity. And beloved, please understand that as God, we, you know, the book of Numbers, I've never really got, I, I never, I never really became so intimate with the book of Numbers as we're doing any studies. But I'm seeing that God is slaying his people left and right, up and down, in and out, coming and going, and he's just not stopping. He's slaying his people because his people know better. Beloved, please understand this. Please understand this. Those of us who are Christians, we know better, and we have to live better. As we saw that God was destroying the children of Israel, left, right, coming, going, up, down, in and out, listen to what First Peter says, listen to what Peter says in First Peter, chapter four, verse seventeen, concerning the church. Now, the church belongs to the Lord Jesus Christ. But listen to these, uh, uh, to this, to this strong denunciation concerning the foul way that the church is working. Uh, beloved brethren, just really quick, everybody just check to make sure that, um, you're muted. Um, once again, everyone just check to make sure that you're muted, so we can enjoy these studies. Thank you. So again, beloved, listen to First Peter, chapter four, verse seventeen. "The time has come that judgment must begin where? At the house of God. And if the first begins at us, where? Where? Where shall the wicked be?" Beloved, please take note of your behavior that the Lord will not have to lower the boom on, yes, us as Christians. Please do not get caught up in this nonsense with the world is teaching, oh, God just loves everybody. God loves unconditionally. No, he does not. You don't even love unconditionally. You. Now, let's start, let's start at the lowest common denominator. You don't love unconditionally. Oh, yes, I do, uh, Scott. See, you don't know me, bro. I love way unconditionally. Oh, yeah? Okay. So allow someone to come into your house and just run them up. Do everything that they want to with your families, your friends, your relatives, the visitors. Do everything with your property. And do everything with your, with your money or your income. And let me just share with you this right quick. You know why you don't love unconditionally? Because you have a password on your computer and you have a pin on your ATM card. That's how I know you don't love unconditionally. Because if you do, I would know the password to your computer, I would know the password to your phone, and I would know the PIN number to your most highest debit card. So please, let's just stop this nonsense that God loves unconditionally, 'cause you don't love unconditionally. Well, Brother Scott, I got something for you. I ain't God. True that. True that. You ain't God, but God is perfect. And for him to have perfection in his kingdom, he's got to have a love that's conditional. For God so loved the world that he gave us only the forgotten son, that whosoever, that's your condition. That whosoever believes shall not perish but have everlasting life. That's your condition. Now, God is not going to allow homosexuals, priests, thieves, liars, hypocrites, backbiters, slanderers, war mongers. He's not going to let them in his kingdom. Because if that's the case, you know, they say they have that saying, heaven on earth, no. If God let these people into his kingdom, it'll be earth in heaven, 'cause that's what we have right now. None of y'all wish that all of this nonsense would come to an end. So just as much as you wish that it comes to an end, God is not wishing. God is going to make it come to an end. It says in Revelation, "He that is unjust, let him be unjust still." If you wanna live the life of Riley and just think you're gonna be sexing and drugging and rocking and rolling for eternity, go ahead. Beloved, we get to chapter twenty-one. We're going to see, I'm sorry. As we're at the twenty, please forgive me. We're going to see that God, God, God's God sent these serpents to kill his people. This is in chapter twenty-one, please forgive me. God sent these serpents to kill his people. Now, when God sent the serpents to kill his people, I know I'm, 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 I'm giving a preview before we get there, but it goes me on the left. When God sent the serpents, they cried out to Moses. Moses prayed to God, and God said, okay, I'm gonna make a remedy for those who were bitten by the snakes. Those who were bitten by the snakes, all they gotta do is just simply look up to this pole, the serpent on the pole, and they will live. In other words, that serpent's bite will not kill them. Now, as we're going to read, God didn't grab that sinful Israelite who got bit and take his head and force him to look up to that pole. God's not going to force you and I to become Christians. Please do not get it twisted, and please understand, God wanted him into his kingdom. You come there of your own volition. That's what's called free will. You have the free will to enter into his kingdom. So while they're still caught today, beloved, take advantage of it and come on home into the Father's kingdom and enjoy blessings. And I mean, enjoy blessings evermore. Okay, my daughter Giovanna has a question. Go ahead, baby, nice and loud. Does God, my daughter asks a question, does God ever abuse his power? Is that correct? Okay, excellent question. Excellent question. One that I've never been, one that I never even thought about. And I've been, um, in the, in, in, as a Christian, nearly four to five times longer than my daughter's even been alive. Excellent question. So the question is, does God abuse his power? The answer to that is no. Let me tell you why. If God abuses power, I wouldn't be driven home from work right now. Y'all wouldn't be listening on this study. Y'all wouldn't be, let me just, let me just bring it down to the lowest common denominator. None of us would be alive if God abused his power. You see, the reason why God hasn't obliterated us is because he's curtailing his power. He's putting this power in check for the sake of his lovely son. Beloved, when God looks down from heaven, let me just use me as an example. When God looks down from heaven, he doesn't see Scott Kendall Foster Senior. He don't see me, 'cause if he saw me, he, he, he would, shoot. He doesn't see me. When God looks down from heaven, he's looking at me through the lens of his Lord, of his son, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and I'm grateful. You know, um, there's a movie, The Incredible Hulk. And there was a scene, it's, this is Edward Norton's Hulk. That's the, that's the best Hulk that I like. And there was a scene when the Hulk was getting ready to bring in on to the abomination, and I mean, he was getting ready his clock. And I mean, he was getting ready to twist his clock. But then, um, Betty Ross, that's her name, Betty Ross got in between the Hulk and the abomination, and she said, stop! And he stopped instantly. Now, of course, I didn't like that, 'cause I'm saying to myself, how in the world is that little weak stop gonna stop this tremendous beast's power and anger from wiping out the abomination? But I took a lesson from that. We just got to learning that when God was ready to destroy the children of Israel because they were off hook, someone greater and might, more powerful than the Hulk ever could be, he listened to the voice of one that said, stop. And I'm paraphrasing. And God said to Moses, because of you, I will not do this thing. So once again, in answer to my boo boo's question, God is absolutely not abusing his power. Because the reason why none of us is destroyed, because of his tremendous love for our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And let me just put it out there. Beloved, y'all better get on board with the Lord Jesus Christ. You're better. Because as Moses was an intercessor for the children of Israel, and he stopped God's wrath, Jesus is our intercessor, and he's stopping God's wrath that is destined for mankind. Because while he's putting this power in check, there are sons and daughters like you and me. Now, this time, I'm not gonna get personal. I'm going to get public. There are sons and daughters like y'all and me that is being gathered into his kingdom. Thank you, Boo Boo, for that excellent question. Verses eight through eleven. Now, we have the children of Israel complaining. Let me read it. Numbers, chapter twenty, verses eight to eleven. "And the Lord spoke unto Moses, saying, Take the rod and gather thou the assembly together, you and Aaron, your brother, and speak, and speak unto the rock before their eyes. And they shall give forth his water, and ye shall bring forth the water out of the rock, so shall ye give the congregation and their beasts drink. So Moses took the rod from before him, as the Lord had commanded him. And Moses and Aaron gathered the congregation together before the rock. And Moses said to them, Hear now, you rebels! Must we fetch you water out of this rock? And Moses lifted up his hand, and with the rod he smoked the rock twice. And water came out in abundance. The congregation drank, and their beasts also." Verse twelve, I'll include that. Verse 12, I'll include that. The Lord spoke unto Moses and Aaron, saying, Because you didn't believe me, and you didn't sanctify me in the eyes of the children of Israel, you shall not bring this congregation into the land which I have given them. In other words, they were not going to enter into the promised land. Again, just previewing a little bit. At the end of this chapter, chapter 20, Aaron dies and they're still pretty much on the, uh, border. Of, of the wilderness, not yet at the land of Canaan. And at the end of Deuteronomy, at the end of the book of Deuteronomy. As they're still traveling through these various cities, which we're gonna touch upon just briefly tonight. Moses died. So neither Aaron nor Moses, who were God's men, did not enter the land of promise. Two thoughts. Beloved. Please take what we're reading. Please take luck. Forgive me, y'all. But yo, yo, yo. The book of Numbers is off the hook. Because the book of Numbers is revealing to me. That yes, Scott, you, you, you're God's man. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. But don't think that just because you're God's man, you can live any kind of buck wildlife that you want to. Because God told his men, his men, Moses and Aaron, that y'all are not entering into the promise of, uh, the land of promise because what? You did not believe me. What does John, chapter three, verse 16 through 18 says? For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes shall not what? Perish. What happened to Moses and Aaron? They died, if we want to use this term, before their time because they did not believe God. Oh, my beloved. Oh, my beloved. Oh, my beloved. You and I, as sons and daughters. Of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Let's not abuse our relationship, our pa- our position with the Father. Because as we just learned that God. Severely punished his two men. Do you think he will not punish you and I? Oh, this blesses my soul. This keeps me from going out there thinking, yeah, I can, I can do a little bit of sinning. And get away with it. No, 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 no. Let me just introduce this thought real quick. Those who say God is tolerant of homosexuals and homosexuality, wrong, 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 wrong. Let them take a journey in the book of Numbers. And they'll stop singing that song. Continue singing that song. They are making themselves rude. For a position for eternity in hell. I hope this gets across to you, but God is not playing. God is not playing. You know why? Because lo- God loves mankind with the highest love. Possible. There is no love greater than the Father's love. But he also has a wrath. That cannot be matched. Speaking about my mother, my mother was a little thing. And. It got mad. Wait, let me start from the, let, let me bring, I'm bringing you good news and bad news. Let me start with the good news. Oh, my mother, she was, she was so docile. It was almost like you could. Knock her over with a feather. Laughing and giggling and just, 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 just enjoying life. But when my mother got mad. And she got this look in her face, oh, well, I turned it off. I'd rather you get an extension cord, wet it, and tear me up instead of giving me that look. My mother's look was pure terror. Beloved, God will love you once again with the greatest love ever. But God will destroy you with the greatest wrath ever. If you married it. Please don't marry it. Beloved. In Exodus, chapter 17. Verse eight, I'm sorry, Exodus, chapter 17, verse six. God told Aaron and Moses to strike the rock. So that water could come out. Here in Numbers, chapter 20, verses through 11, he simply said, speak to the rock. This once again is a unique picture of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. When our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, had his tenure on earth. The water that came from him was after he was struck, hung on the cross. The soldier pierced his side, forthwith came water. He was struck, so to speak. Now, how do we get this living water? That the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, is today? All we simply do is speak to the rock that is higher than I. And we speak to him through prayers. In the kitchen, he will not be struck again. Our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, will not be struck again as he was 2,000 years ago. So once again, this was a type. Speaking of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, remember, Old Testament is the blueprint. New Testament is the final picture, the building. So once again. God's men made a mistake in striking the rock. God was displeased with their actions. He did to them what he did to them to show that you and I will never. Never. Have our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ crucified again. All we have to do is speak to him and he will give us the water of life freely. And also, beloved, this helps us to appreciate, now, God had given the children of Israel water in abundance, irregardless of. Their, their, I'm talking about the children of Israel, their murmuring, their complaints, their disobedience. Scripture helps us to appreciate that God sends his rain and sun on the wicked. That were complaining, they were conducting themselves wickedly, but yet God gave them water abundantly. Again, the reason why all eight billion of us are still alive, and there are some wicked ones that are alive. Oh, yes, there are some ones that are wicked and off the hook. God takes care of them. He heals them when they're broken. He provides for them food, nourishment. He provides them sunlight. He even provides them a measure of wealth. But this is all done for them to get it right. So yes, the children of Israel were provided with that nourishing water. Because God is that loving of the God. But understand. Our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, if I may parallel. He's for the world. What did scripture say? Again, John 3:16 has to be our reference scripture. For God so loved the world, and the world is mankind wicked and righteous. Well, let me start from this angle. We all start out wicked, believing on Jesus Christ, we turn out righteous. So like God provided for the children of Israel, even in the midst of their wickedness, God also. Provides us, Jesus Christ, in the midst of our sins. Listen to this beautiful scripture. While we were yet sinners, Christ died for us. Beloved, you see the beauty of the Old Testament with the New Testament, the book of Numbers in particular? How it so just present the beautiful, glorious picture of our Lord, of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Beloved, moving on down through, uh, verses 14 through 21. Beloved, Genesis, chapter 12, verse three says. God speaking to Abraham, I will bless those that bless you. I will curse those that curse you. And then you shall, all the families of the earth be blessed. Beloved, Edom. They chose to ignore this warning. Let me repeat that. Edom chose to ignore this warning that God set forth, actually down through the ages, down to today. The children of Israel asked their brother. Now, Edom, let me just give you a quick bio of who Edom is. Edom is actually Esau. He's identified as Edom because that means red. So once again, whenever you hear the name Edom or the term Edom. That's Esau and actually his descendants. So again, beloved, please understand. That. The chi- um, the children of Israel's brother. Now, I'm talking about their twin brother is Esau slash Edom. And when the children of Israel asked for permission. To simply go through their passageway, through their land, they not only told them no, they came out to war against them. Beloved. Edom's first act against God was when he sold his birthright and he told Jacob. Of what value is this birthright to me? Sure, you can have it. Beloved. In the, um. Eastern culture. Family. Is more important. Than anything on earth. Two people groups that are just family, and I mean, they're just family through and through, are the Jews and the Arabs. That to them, that's their wealth, family. And the firstborn, he gets an inheritance, not just the financial inheritance, but he gets inheritance and some rights that are just not, um. Um. Available to the one who's born after him. So when you despise this firstborn right, you're despising something that God instituted. So Edom, Esau, he started his trip at the very beginning. He despised the verse, the birthright that God had instituted. Then, as we're moving down, his offspring, and you gotta understand that Esau taught. His offspring to hate Israel. Because he had a hatred for Israel, but he was supposed to get over that. Be ye angry, scripture says, but do not sin. You angry with your brother, sister, mother, father? Okay, be mad, but get over that, yo. Because you got someone who's greater than you, whose anger toward you will have no end. So because of Esau's hatred for Ja- uh, for Jacob. Listen to what God has done. To Esau. And just let me throw this at you real quick. Today, here in the 21st century, who's around? Go ahead, Boo Boo. Go ahead, nice and loud.
When God said, um, like God said, um, Esau, I have hated Jacob, I have loved, right?
Right.
He said that like. At the end of everything or like in the beginning?
Very good question. My daughter's asking, when the scripture says. And that was the scripture that I was just getting ready to read. When scripture says, Jacob, I have loved, but Esau I have hated? My daughter was asking, was that, was that at the beginning of these men's life? That's Romans, chapter nine, verse 13. Let me read it. It is written, Jacob have I loved, but Esau have I hated? So my daughter was asking, is this at the end of everything where both sons have set their, um, record, so to speak? Or was this at the very beginning? Scripture helps us to appreciate that while they were yet in their mother's womb. While they were yet in their mother's womb. Of Esau, he hates. Jacob, he loves. Wait a minute, that ain't right. They weren't even born yet. They're little itty bitty innocent children. Beloved. Isaiah, the one from the beginning. So God knows what time it is before time even got started. So when God says he hated Jake, uh, hated Esau. That was rightly so because Esau, now let me say this, let me say this part first. So that you won't misunderstand. God didn't hate Esau because Esau hated God. Then that mean that God is a reactor. He's acting on what Esau started. No. Like I just told you. Before they were even born. Before they could know what love and hatred is, God hated Esau. So beloved, what did I read to us last week? You know, a couple of weeks ago? We love him because he first loved us. And those who hate God, listen to me, listen to. Those who hate God. Was hated by God first. Adolf Hitler didn't say. I hate God. And then God said, oh, yeah, I got something for you, Hitler. God said, Hitler, I hate you. Now, I'm just waiting for you to get lying. Uh, there's, 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 there's a song about Smokey Robinson. I second that emotion. So God pretty much said that Hitler. I'm waiting for you to second the motion of me hating you. So beloved, please don't get it twisted. If a person out there say, oh, I can't stand God and I hate Jesus Christ. Don't think that they started that party. You see, God hated them before they were even created. Please understand that. God loved you before you got started. Or God hated you before you got started. Okay, so please understand that transaction. God is, he, he, he doesn't, um. He doesn't react to our initiation. God has predestined this entire everything. So we only react, remember, we love him because he first loved us. And you can say, those who do, we hate him because he hates us. The apostle Paul said, knowing the terror of the Lord, we persuade men. So beloved, please know this. That God is a awesome God. God has terror. And you better understand it. You better know it. You better acknowledge it. And you better live like you know that God has terror. God said, I will bless those that bless thee. Beloved, when you encounter someone, just, just, just be on their good side. It don't hurt you. Let, let, let me share with you something. My mother used to work for Victoria Gotti. That is the, uh, the, the world famous John Gotti, the, the, the mob boss. Yes, my mother used to work for his daughter. And his mother. So my mother was, um, an aide to Victoria and, um. Which is John Gotti's daughter. And his mother. They loved my mom so well that Carmine. Victoria's husband, I used to go pick up my mother and I was driving a 1972 Cadillac. And that car was, it, it, it would, the car would say prayers, not me. The car would say prayers. I hope this guy ain't driving me today. So. I was driving a car that's, that was saying prayers. You would think that car was a transformer. Anyway, John, uh, Carmine said to me. Yo, Scott, you, 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 you're, you're good people. You're cool people. Listen, my, um, my, my, my yard down there in Suffolk Boulevard. You go down there and anything you need, you just tell them Carmine sent me and it's yours. I'm saying that to say this. You be kind to people because you never know when it'll turn around and bless you. Trust me when I tell you. Just, it doesn't, you know, and please forgive me. I see some, some of my coworkers. And it, it. They'll close the door on people. And it'd be like, yeah, I closed the door on you. And why? Why do that? Did you forget that we're customers as well? I'm a conductor as well as a, 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 a customer. So why do the people evil, godless, mean things that will turn around and hap-? I, I ain't worried about that because first of all, when they see me, my NTA outfit, they're gonna hold the door for me. And anyway, I don't even use the train. Okay. God's gonna get you another way. What did we just read in Joel? What did we just read in Joel? One that escaped the lion was met with a bear? So if you're not getting caught by having the door shut on you one way, God will make sure you get to just desserts. Oh, the beauty of the Bible. Oh, the beauty of the Bible. So again, beloved, be kind to people. Edom should have been kind to his brother and let them pass through. Not only was he not kind to him, he warred with him and God and God defeated him. All because he continued to have this mega hatred, massive hatred for his brother. You don't do that. Cause God is going to make you pay the piper. Listen to how God feels about Esau as we move through time. Malachi, chapter one, verses one through four. The burden of the word of the Lord to Israel by Malachi. I have loved you, this is God speaking of Israel. I have loved you, saith the Lord, yet ye say, wherein hast thou loved us? Was not Esau Jacob's brothers? Excuse me, was not Esau Jacob's brother, saith the Lord? Yet I loved Jacob and I hated Esau. And laid his mountains and his heritage waste for the draggers of the wilderness. Edom saith, we are impoverished, but we will return and build the desolate places. Thus saith the Lord of hosts, they shall build, but I will throw them down. They shall call them the border of wickedness and the people against whom the Lord has indignation forever. Beloved, here in the twenty-first century, there are children of Israel that we pretty much encounter daily. There is not a stitch of anyone from Esau. Cause God destroyed his entire line as we move through time. And please understand that from Edom, they were the seed of Abraham. Please do not get it twisted. They were the son of Isaac. And Isaac was the son of Abraham. So they had pretty much, if you wanna talk about nepotism, they had Abraham, who was called the friend of God on their side, but they decided not to take advantage of it. They decided they wanted to hate their brother. That's why it's not good to hate, hate, hate anyone. It's, dude, it's not good, especially family, especially family. If you and your family have squabbles, there, there's this old saying, just because your teeth bit your tongue, you don't knock your teeth out. No. So if you and your family have squabbles, my two youngest, my two youngest, my two youngest, oh my gosh. They go at it each other. And I mean, they go at it, especially my, my, my oldest, my son. These are my two youngest, but the oldest, he, my, my baby, she's the youngest. They go at it. One day I got upset with my, my, my boy. I'm like, yo, I'm paraphrasing, yo, slow, slow down on your sister, bro. Until you know that my daughter said, daddy, slow down on my brother. So what I'm saying is, if y'all have squabs with each other, kiss and make up. Cause y'all are supposed to love one another. I, 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 I cracked up when my daughter came to my, uh, son's rescue as I'm trying to come to her rescue in regards to my son. Brothers are supposed to, y'all are supposed to love one another, absolutely. Beloved, just to give you a quick preview, um, in Numbers chapter twenty-one, the two kings, Saehan and Og, um, they didn't have cell phones, text messages, Gmails and all that back then. So apparently they didn't get the texts that God had did something pretty vicious to Edom for not allowing the children of Israel to pass through their land. So children of Israel made a request to the king of Saehan and Og to make a passage through their territory. They not only denied them, they went to war with them. And you gotta know, one with God is the majority. The children of Israel were not a warlike people, but the children of Israel has a war like God. So please do not misunderstand. Don't think you can go up against God's people saying y'all are the majority, y'all are minority, y'all are weak, watered down and just, I don't even wanna describe what kind of mess you Christians are. Yeah, we're a mess. But we got a loving Father that chastises us for being messy, but will protect us from anyone else trying to bring us hurt, harm or danger. Beloved brethren, I wanna bring my study, my portion to a close. And the close that I wanna bring is when those fiery serpents bit the children of Israel. Now beloved, please understand this, please understand what I'm about to say to you. Please understand what I'm about to say to you so that you can get a full picture. We're in Numbers chapter twenty-one, verses five, six, eight, nine. Once again, Numbers chapter twenty-one, verses five, six, eight, nine. Please understand what I'm getting ready to say to you. This passage says that God sent those serpents that killed his people. Beloved, I hope that y'all are looking at God through these studies in a different light. No, he's not mean and cruel and blah, blah, blah. God is loving, kind and blah, blah, blah. But God is not not to be mistaken, to be mistaken. He will destroy you. Let's wanna say this really quick. God sent those serpents to destroy his people. He then provided a remedy for those he was destroying. Okay? Persons say, why would a loving God allow the devil to run through this world? Well, we're getting a preview of that here in Numbers chapter twenty-one. See, God kicked Satan out of heaven. The scripture says, woe to the earth for the devil has come down and he has great fury. So beloved, God kicked Satan out of heaven. So when you wonder why God is allowing Satan to run him up and do what he's doing, first of all, he's God. First of all, he's God. Second of all, he's allowing it because we as human beings, what did God say in Genesis chapter six? Let me give you this picture, then let me say to you what God said. Now I love my mom and dad like incredibly. So let's say one day my mom and dad says, Scott, come, we, 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 we wanna chew the fat with you. I say, yeah, ma, yeah, dad. I called my dad daddy up to the day he left in two thousand and one, and I was a married uh, husband. I was a grown man, but I was still calling him daddy. Cause I love that dude so much. Anyway. Let's say my mother and father said, Scott, your dad and I were sitting here talking and we just wanna tell you, and I'm sitting there all excited, cause I'm thinking they gonna tell me, I'm about to get a PS four or Xbox One. And we just wanted to tell you that. Irma, you go ahead and tell them. Well, Scott, your father and I come to the conclusion that we regret that we birthed you. I regret carrying you in my womb nine months and I regret bringing you up to this point. Dude. Dude. I would have been obliterated had my parents told me that. Listen to God in Genesis chapter six of what he said. Now this is someone perfect. Remember, my parents are imperfect. Listen to what someone perfect said. Genesis chapter six, verse six. And it repented the Lord that he had made man on the earth and it grieved him at his heart. Don't underestimate the true and living God. Don't. Stop letting the world, the Oprahs and the Joel Osteen's and all these other morons, and yes, I'm gonna use that term, please forgive me. Stop letting them paint the picture of who God is, cause either you're gonna believe Oprah or you're gonna believe the scripture. The choice is yours. The choice is yours. After God sent these serpents to destroy his people, he made a remedy, a remedy from their destruction. He told Moses to build a pole and Brother Lyndon had touched beautifully upon it last night. Um, I mean, last week, I'm sorry, they were using it and that's the doctor's emblem with the, uh, pole and the two snakes wrapped around it. So we're using, um, emblem here, take it from Numbers twenty-one, even in the twenty-first century. God told Moses to build a, 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 a pole and put it on a fire. Wait, wait, please don't sit there and tell me that something bit by a poisonous snake that all they have to do is just look and they won't die? Here and tell me that. Please do not sit there and tell me that all they had to do was to look and they will be spared from death. All right, you beg me, but I'm not gonna listen to you. That's exactly what I'm saying. I was watching the lion, um, a nature, uh, a nature show. And it's huge, well, he looks huge on TV. I know in real life, he's like really huge. Lions weigh up to five hundred plus pounds. It was a full grown male lion. I take, yes, full grown male lion. And he was bitten by a cobra. And oh my gosh, that was a sight that I only seen once and I wouldn't like to see again. The lion was convulsing, he was foaming at the mouth. Oh, he was just So let's just use that lion for example. From my mouth, listen to what scripture is telling us what happened to those who looked at the pole. Numbers chapter twenty-one, verse nine. Verses eight and nine. And the Lord said unto Moses, make thee a fiery serpent and set it upon a pole, and it shall come to pass that everyone that is bitten, when he looks upon it, shall live. And Moses made a serpent of brass and put it on a pole. And it came to pass that if a serpent had bitten any man, when he beheld the serpent, he lived. Beloved, you and I, today, we have been bitten by that serpent that is found in Genesis, chapter three. Let's see who that serpent is. Genesis, chapter three, verse fourteen. Let's look at thirteen. And the Lord God said unto the woman, what is this that thou hast done? And the woman said, the serpent beguiled me, and I did eat. And the Lord God said unto the serpent, because thou hast done this, you are cursed above all cattle and above every beast of the fill. And upon your belly you shall go, and dust shall you eat all the days of your life. Beloved, this is why I love the Bible, because it gives such beautiful, four K picturesque pictures that God allows us to unearth and bring it to the fore. This serpent, once again, this is Satan. The dust, beloved, the dust is you and me. Let me repeat that. The dust, beloved, is you and me. Listen to these. And I, and I, and I, and I, and I call them beautiful words. Listen to these beautiful words as found in scripture concerning us being dust. Genesis, chapter three. I'm sorry, yes, Genesis chapter three, verse nineteen. This is God speaking to Adam. The sweat of thy face shalt thou eat bread till thou return unto the ground, for out of it you were taken for dust. God is calling us our right terminology. Dust. Listen also to Job, chapter thirty-four, verse fifteen. Job, chapter thirty-four, verse fifteen reads as follows. All flesh shall perish together and man shall turn again unto dust. Ecclesiastes, chapter three, verse twenty. Listen to what it says. All go unto one place, all are of the dust and all turn to dust again. Beloved, God said that the serpent, which is Satan, shall eat the dust all his days. From Genesis, chapter three to today, listen to me. From Genesis, chapter three till October twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, Satan is eating dust. Satan does us for pictures of death. He is eating us in a sense. So there who were bitten, or they had, they was look up to the pole and they were saved. You and I, get ready, get ready, get ready. You and I, who was bitten by that great serpent, Satan the devil, we look to the Lord Jesus Christ, the author and finisher of our faith. And we will have life and have it more abundantly. Brother Lyndon.
Okay. Well, you know, uh, um, enemy duty is to steal, kill and destroy. And to carry on from Scott's point, it means when you read the scriptures, when it says, we should be on the alert because the enemy is on the prowl, like a lion seeking hmm, hmm, seeking people to devour. And how does he eat mankind? How does he devour mankind? Through accusations. He accuses us left and right. Oh, look, he looked at that girl wrong. Oh, look, look at that girl, she lied about, um, claiming that the father, this man is the father of a kid. Looking to destroy you through accusations. Some, most of them are false accusations. But he's accuser of the brothers and he only wants to dig a pit for you. But thankfully, we go to Psalms, it says, those who dig pits fall in the pit, they fall themselves. So we see that the enemy has dug a pit for Jesus and now he's gonna be thrown into the bottomless pit. Why? Because Jesus is infinite. We need to make good judgment, but we shouldn't be on the prowl accusing our brothers for selfish gain. We shouldn't be accusing our brothers for, uh, just to, to have a sense of, um, have a sense of, uh, an upliftment that, oh, yes, I'm better than him. So you know, let me accuse him. Or maybe I'm jealous of him or jealous of her and I'm going to accuse my brother. Now I could be technically right to the T, but I'm on the wrong agenda. It's for selfish motives. See, when God accuses, it's for the sake of righteousness. God, when he accuses you, it's based on truth. It's based on a good focus on what is right. You know, some people can say, wow, Scott's coming late. I really wanna Wow, Scott's coming late. I really wanna have that promotion, but I'm all gonna get that promotion if, if, if you, oh, oh, yeah, I got it. Yeah, he keeps coming in late, so I'm gonna come to the supervisor and I'm gonna say, oh, this, this brother Darryl, and you, and you know he's a good worker. Jealous of him. Say, hey, how am I gonna get that promotion? Oh, I'm going to accuse him and I'm gonna say that he's always late so I can get that position. Maybe technically right, you may be actually true to the T, but it's for the wrong motives. And that's why we see. It opened up, we see that it opens up for like Daniel. They were technically right. They said, hey, you just signed a deal saying that nobody should worship any god but you, Dar, um, King Darius. And Daniel was put in the pit. Well, look what happened. Those who throw people in a pit end up in the pit they had reserved for those people. That pit, so if you see you're, you're stuck constantly digging pits for people, watch out, you're gonna fall in it yourself. We are here to make good judgment, we judge correctly. But people twist descriptions. You can't judge me. J- Jesus said, judge and you will not be judged. No. Jesus meant if you judge from a hypocritical heart, then you'll be judged. Cause if you say, hey, stop murdering and you're murdering, then you're gonna be judged. But if you judge correctly, you're not murdering somebody and you have to say, hey, listen, that's wrong, you cannot murder. Person can't just come out and say, oh, you can't judge me. People have to, and it's, I take it, it's um, if you get a chance, check out this facet. And I said it to Scott, Anthony. Philip Anthony, uh, Philip Anthony Mills. Used to be a stick up kid, dealing drugs. Parents are Trinidadian, Scott shared this just morning, he said, and he was preaching. Need to judge correctly. People are biblically illiterate. So when they just look at one scripture, they just, they just milk it and they milk it and they don't realize that they're misguided. We make good judgment, we're not judgmental, we're not being prejudiced. But we judge correctly. Look at it for what it is. Stop straining at a nut and try to swallow camel. Judge with, um, judge with respect from the heart. God will let you understand, but if you're judgmental, you're condescending, that's, that's, you have to understand. When God accuses us from the truth, but when the devil does, it's for selfish agendas. The devil loves the law, not for the sake of the law of death, but he loves it because it breeds death and it gives honor, more power to him. The more people sin, the more death is exalted. He don't care about the law, but he uses it for selfish motives. That's why we have to be careful. Okay? That's why we have to be careful. Are we looking to uplift our brother? If we shun our brother for a moment, if we, you know, we, we say, hey, wounds of a friend can be trusted more than multiple kisses of an enemy. What are we gonna do? And Brother Scott says, you can't hate your brother, you can't, and look with, look with the brothers, you, you see the pattern? Look with the brothers of Joseph did, they dug up a sister for their brother, Joseph's. When you see that you're being molded into Christ, you're gonna see that people dig pits for you. You're gonna see that they're gonna throw stones at you. Why? Because Jesus is inside you. And the only way we can appreciate what he's done for us, we have to experience what he went through to save us from hell. You gotta taste the cup. Those serpents out there. That bite you when we sin, what do serpents do? They accuse. So we have to look to God, please forgive me, help me out of this pit. Cause I have some foul accusations that really want the worst for me. They accuse me not because they love me, they, they don't, they don't accuse me just trying to find the benefit for me, they accuse me out of jealousy. Because they are controlled, they carry out the desires of their father, the devil. The, and that when we look up to that, that serpent on the staff, we look up to Jesus. And it says in Thessus, chapter, um, I believe in two or three, when it says, when we look, when we look. To, to, when we pray to the Lord, the veil is removed. But anytime we read the law, the veil is on our hearts. Jesus is the only one that can remove that, um, that veil. Only Jesus can remove that veil. And that's why we love the fact that he died on the cross, not only to resurrect from the dead, but to draw. All men from all four corners of the world to the Father. He was once barren. Hannah. Hannah. Elizabeth. Sarai. All them shared in the sufferings of Christ because he was barren and bereaved. He had no children. When Adam and Eve were so called, as Brother Scott mentioned earlier, were so called kidnapped or taken custody. Devil took custody of. The children, and I'll read it to you. It's in Jeremiah, chapter ten, verse twenty. I want you to open up to your scriptures. And then we'll go into numbers. And we're gonna talk about how God protects his children. But before, I want you to realize. We read this before and um years ago, but just to be a refresher. Let's go to Jeremiah, chapter ten, verse twenty. Jeremiah, chapter ten, verse twenty. Think of Jesus. This is Jeremiah inspired by the Holy Spirit, but he's echoing the thoughts of Jesus. When you hear about somebody mentioning about a temple, um, a house, a shelter, a mansion, or a tent. It's referred to as the body. So my tent, this is Jesus speaking, my body, okay? My tent is destroyed, all its ropes are snapped. My children are gone from me and are no more. No one is left now to pitch my tent or to set up my shelter. And in the promise, the accuser of the brother, he doesn't want to release the children of God. He has us held in custody of the law because of our sins. But because of our righteous king, out of the kindness of his heart, and he want, and out of the, because the will of the father. He's saving some of us back. And I want you to, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna go to forty nine. And I'm just giving you a little taste to just build up from what Brother Scott beautifully put together. It's either you serve God or you serve the devil. There's no in between, I'm not neutral, I'm, I, hey, I'm not a Christian, I'm not a Muslim, I'm just me, no. It's either you are a child of the promise or you're a child of, you're, you're a child of the promise or you're a slave child. Under the law. Now, I want, I want you to, um, I'm gonna read this real quick. So you can understand the beauty of God having a chi- children for his son. And we see Hannah had no children, she was ridiculed, she was mocked, just like Jesus. Everybody's laughing, but then it says, though, uh, um, a woman may be barren, she will have many, she ends up with many children. It's a, it's a mirror, it's actually a foreshadow of Christ. Okay, so I'm gonna go to um Isaiah forty nine. And this is, now think of the father, just think of the father reassuring the son, you're gonna have children. I know you're barren and bereaved, son, you lost the children. Satan has taken custody, he's, he's kidnapped humanity. This is what he says. See, I have engraved you in the palms of my hands. Your walls are ever before me, your children hasten back, and those who laid your ways depart from you. Lift up your eyes and look around, all your children gather and come to you. As surely as I live, declares the Lord, you will wear them as ornaments. So then we see when Joseph was stripped of his, his robe or ornaments, he was stripped from the children, his children, he was thrown in the pit. So you see a lot of uh these subliminals. It's really a reflection of what Christ went through. So as surely as I live, declares the Lord, you will wear them all, you'll wear your children as ornaments, you'll put them on like a bride. Though you are ruined and made desolate and you, your land laid waste, now you will be too small for your people. And those who devoured you will be far away. Again, devour is accuse. What did they do? Oh, yes, you know, Jesus said he's gonna take down this temple and raise it up for three days. This guy thinks he could do that? It took us, it took us forty six years to build up this temple. And they falsely accuse him, they tried to devour him, right? Then the children born during your bereavement will yet say in your hearing. This place is too small for us, give us more space to live in. Then you will say in your heart, who bore me these? I was bereaved, I was rejected and barren. I was ex, I was ex, I was exiled and rejected. Who brought these up? This is Jesus speaking now. I was left all alone, but those, where have they come from? This is what the sovereign Lord says. See, I will beckon to the nations, I will lift up my banner to the peoples. They will bring your sons in their arms and carry your daughters on their hips. Kings will be your foster fathers and their queens your nursing mothers. They will bow down before you with their faces to the ground, they will lick the dust at your feet. Then you will know that I'm the Lord, those who hope in me will not be dispo- disappointed. So we see that the Father is reassuring the Son. Listen, I know this is gonna be a bitter cup to taste, but you're gonna gain children. There's gonna be too much, it's gonna, you're gonna say it's too small for all these children coming back, and so now it all makes sense. In my father's house, there are many mansions, there are many children. If it were not so, I would not told you, but I come to prepare a place for, for you and me, I'm the house. You know, they, they say in the Yankees, they say that the house that Ruth built, well, this is the house that Jesus built. We are the spiritual stones that are built in this house. We are the mansions that make up the house. Now, when we go to Numbers twenty two. I'm gonna read it through, um, you're gonna see a lot of, uh. I can, I'm gonna go to Numbers twenty four because this is Ba- this is about Balaan, he's a divinist. And I'm just giving you a preview. And Balak, who is a mole by, was scared of the Israelites. He was so scared, he wanted Balaan, he wanted Balaan to curse the children of God. You know, wow. They're numerous. I want to pay you money to curse them. And we're gonna look at the history of the mole bites. We're gonna go back to Genesis, chapter nineteen, where do the mole bites come from? The mole bites came from Lot. And I'll read that for you. We'll read that for you to show you that anything that's sewn to the flesh reaps destruction, it reaps sin. Avic, we all, we all seen that from Abraham, they couldn't wait for the promised child, so they said, hey. Let's sow to the flesh, let's lean on our own understanding and look. There comes Ishmael. A wild donkey for man. Going back to, you know, election, you know, people say, okay, granted, we have free will, but yet God has sovereign will. He says, Jacob, I love, Esau, I hate it. Now, we understand that God shows us not based on our works, but yet we see when he makes a prediction of Ishmael. He knows everything about you. Just because we are. Adopted based on our works, it doesn't negate the fact that God knows about you before you were born. He knows everything about you. Everything the all-knowing Elohim knows. So I, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna read to you Numbers, chapter twenty two. I've just been a little, um, bit excited and, um. Hey, I, I mentioned many times, I'm learning as I uh go along in the, with, in this journey with you. And um, there are many obstacles, let me tell you, and I mentioned this, um, Brother Scott. That we are in a, you know, there's an AA meeting, Alcoholics Anonymous, well, there's a, I, I'm in a WA meeting. I'm in a, I'm in a World's Anonymous meeting, I, I am addicted to the world. But I know God, through his grace, it's shown me that, listen. I'm gonna detox you and I'm gonna prepare you so you'll only want me in your heart. It doesn't negate the fact that you'll have other pleasures and desires, but you, God will be your priority. He is number one. And by the grace, you'll see the Holy Spirit. And to see it in you. You may have struggles, you may have sin, just like Paul. You may not be able to carry out. The beautiful will of God because of your body of flesh. But thanks be to God, we have been redeemed from sin and death. So let's go to Numbers, chapter twenty two. And we see that every time you see evil, it's because of fear. I, I noticed that, I, I, this just came to my mind. Herod, right? He was scared that Jesus was gonna take his throne. So what did they do? Hey, wise man, go out there and seek Jesus and then, you know, when you find him, I'll go out there and worship him. But he really wanted to kill Jesus because he thought that Jesus was gonna take his throne. Same thing with Saul, he was scared that David was gonna take his throne and he tried to kill him. And it keeps going on. Oh, I'm scared, this person's gonna probably expose me, I'm gonna be implicated, I'll be sentenced to jail, I gotta kill this person because I'm scared. Everything comes from fear. And without God is always fear. Nothing good comes out of fear. Numbers, chapter twenty two. Then, then the Israelites traveled to the, the plains of Moab and camped along the Jordan across the Jericho. Now Balak, son of Zippor, saw all that Israel had done to the Amorites. And Moab was terrified because there were so many people. Let's go back to uh, um, Exodus, isn't that the same fear? That Farrow had, they're too numerous. They'll probably join forces with another country and conquer us. So he made an edict to have all the male children killed. You see the pattern? So from Herod to Pharaoh to Saul. We see that. Now we see that, you know, we see that God's the author and finisher of faith, but we see that the devil is the author of fear. You see that fear reaps destruction. Moab was terrified because there were so many people. Indeed, Moab was filled with dread because of the Israelites. The mole bites said to the elders of Midian, this horde is going to lick up everyone around us. As an ox licks up the grass of the field, they pretty much, he's saying, hey, these Israelites, they're gonna, they're gonna annihilate us. The way they annihilated the Amorites. But we know that God was doing all that. We have to be thankful that God is fighting our battles and, and now I want to show you the mole bites, where do they come from? We have to be thankful that God is fighting our battles. And and now I want to show you the Moabites. Where did they come from? We go to Genesis, chapter nineteen, verse thirty. It is written. If I'm too fast for you, I will reassure you that this will be recorded. It'll be on YouTube. I'll send text messages, uh I'll send text message to Scott of all the scriptures that we have uh reviewed and discussed, so you can eat at your own pace. You can eat and drink these words when you are having a one-on-one with God. Genesis, chapter nineteen, verse thirty. Lot and his two daughters left Zohair and settled in the mountains, for he was afraid to stay in Zohair. He and his two daughters lived in a cave. One day, the older daughter said to the younger, our father's old and there's no man around here to give us children as, as is the custom all over the earth. Let's get our father to drink wine and then sleep with him and preserve our family's line through our father. That night, they got their father to drink wine and the older daughter went in and slept with him. He was not aware of it when he, when she lay down or when she got up. The next day, the older daughter said to the younger, last night I slept with my father. Let's get him to drink wine again tonight and you go in and sleep with him so we can preserve our family line through our father. So they got their father to drink wine that night also. And the younger daughter went in and slept with him. Again, he was not aware of it. Then she lay down or when she, there um. Again, he was not aware of it when she lay down or when she got up. So both of Lot's daughters became pregnant by their father. The older daughter had a son and she named him Moab. He is the father of the Moabites of today. And the younger daughter also had a son and she named him Ben-Amin. He is the father of the Ammonites of today. So we see how the Moabites came to be. I hope you understand what I'm stressing on. Any time we sow to the flesh, it reaps destruction. We saw that in Abraham's life, the father, father's faith. We see that across the Bible. And so I want you to understand origin of the Moabites. So Balen, son of Zippor, who was king of Moab at that time, sent messengers to summon Balen, son of Bior, who was at Pethor near the Afraides River in his native land. Balen said, a people has come out of Egypt. They covered the face of the land and have settled next to me. Now come and put a curse on these people because they are too powerful for me. Perhaps then I will be able to defeat them and drive them out of the land. For I know that whoever you bless is blessed and whoever you curse is cursed. The elders of Moab and Midian left, taking with them the the fee for divination. When they came to Balen, they told him what Balen had said. Spend the night here, Balen said to them, and I will report back to you what the answer the Lord gives me. So the Moabite official stayed with him. God came to Balen and asked, who are all these men with you? Balen said to God, Balen, son of Zippor, king of Moab, sent me this message. A people that has come out of Egypt covers the face of the land. Now come and put a curse on them for me. Perhaps then I will be able to fight them and drive them away. But God said to Balen, do not go with them. You must not put a curse on those people because they are blessed. The next morning Balen got up and said to Balen's officials, go back to your own country, for the Lord has refused to let me go with you. So the Moabite officials returned to Balen and said, Balen refused to come with us. Then Balen sent other officials, more numerous and more distinguished than the first to Balen and said, this is what Balen, son of Zippor, says. Do not let anything keep you from coming to me because I will reward you handsomely and do whatever you say. Come and put a curse on these people for me. But Balen answered them. Even if Balen gave me all the silver and gold in this palace, I could not do anything great or small to do, to go beyond the command of the Lord, my God. Now spend the night here so that I can find out what else the Lord will tell me. That night, God ga- came to Balen and said, since these men have come to summon you, go with them, but do only what I tell you. Balen got up in the morning, saddled his donkey and went with the Moabite officials. But God was angry when he went. Now you would stop like this. Yeah. Our human logic would say, God, didn't you just say to this man that if they summon, since they are summoning you, you know, go with them and just just do as I say? Now he's going with them. Why are you, why are you angry with him? God knows the heart. Jesus displayed this in Luke, chapter five. I'm gonna go briefly there to give you a a a brighter picture that the word is sharper than a double-edged sword. The word knows what's in your heart. As man, I'm gonna even bring it further. God knows your thoughts before you think them. So if you see that God is gracious to you, you better be thankful. He knows everything what you're gonna say before you said. He knows every stupid decision you're gonna make. And when you see that, he's still got mercy on you, you better kiss his feet. Those all the hairs in your head, the thoughts that you think examines you and still shows you his faithfulness. Because of your love, we are not consumed. Your compassion is never fail. They're new every morning. Great is your faithfulness. So you better thank God. Let's go to Luke, chapter five. Luke, chapter five. I know this is kind of like a review for some of us, but I know the newcomers there with you, so you can dig in, you know, wants you to eat. And uh go to Luke, chapter five, verse twenty. Okay, uh paralyzed man wanted to be healed. There was, the the place was, I mean, crowded. So they decided to make a hole in the roof so they can lower their friend down to Jesus so he can be healed. And when Jesus saw their faith, he said, friend, your sins are forgiven. The Pharisees and the teachers of the law began thinking to themselves, who is this fellow who speaks blasphemy? Who can forgive sins but God alone? Jesus knew what they were thinking and asked, why are you thinking these things in your hearts? Which is easier, to say your sins are forgiven or to say, get up and walk? But I want you to know that the Son of Man has authority on earth to forgive sins. So God knows. He knows the thoughts of your heart. And we need to be on guard and say, God, that thought came in or that craving came in. Be honest, be transparent with God. And so suspect, hey, when I have bad thoughts come in, I'm like, man, I'm being bombarded by all these evil thoughts. God, you gotta help me. So God knows the heart. And I I I will read to you um before we go back, Hebrews. I believe it's Hebrews, chapter uh four. And it it tells us about the word. It describes how the word knows the thoughts. It pierces the heart and uh is sharper than a double-edged sword. Just give me one moment as I get there. Hebrews, chapter four, verse twelve. Let's put the, let's connect the dots. You know, we go to John, chapter one. This is, in the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God. Here we see here, here we read in Hebrews, chapter four, verse twelve. The word of God is alive and active, sharper than any double-edged sword. It penetrates even the dividing soul and spirit, joints and marrow. It judges the thoughts and attitudes of the heart. Who judged the attitude and the thoughts of the heart? When the Pharisee said, who's this young fellow thinking he can forgive sins? Only God can do that. Jesus, that double-edged sword, that double-edged sword of God, the word. So Balen probably was really tempted, like, hey, you know what? Maybe I can get a little something for this. May give me a little something more, right? Okay, okay, okay. You come with me. Okay, maybe. And so now we see the angel of the Lord appear beforehand. Balen got up in the morning, saddled his donkey and went with the Moabite officials. But God was very angry when he went, and the angel of the Lord stood in the road to oppose him. Balen was riding on his donkey and his servants were with him. When the donkey saw the angel of the Lord standing in the road with a drawn sword in his hand, it turned off the road into a field. Balen beat it to get it back on the road. Then the angel of the Lord stood in the narrow path through the vineyards with the walls on both sides. When the donkey saw the angel of the Lord, it pressed close to the wall, crushing Balen's foot against it. So he beat the donkey again. Then the angel of the Lord moved on ahead and stood in the narrow place where there was no room to turn, neither to the be, neither to the right or to the left. When the donkey saw the angel of the Lord, it lay down under Balen and he was angry and beat it with his staff. Then the Lord opened the donkey's mouth and it said to Balen, what have you done to make you, what have I done to make you beat me these three times? This is a donkey speaking. And Balen answered the donkey, you have made a fool of me. If only I had a sword in my hand, I would kill you right now. The donkey said to Balen, am I not your own donkey, which you have always ridden to this day? Have I been in the habit of doing this for you, to you? No, he said. Then the Lord opened Balen's eyes and he saw the angel of the Lord standing in the road with a sword drawn. So he bowed down and fell face down. So right there we know, this is God right here, the angel of the Lord. The angel of the Lord asked him, why have you beaten your donkey these three times? I have come here to oppose you because your path is reck- is a reckless one before me. The donkey saw me and turned away from these three times. If it had not turned away, I would certainly have killed you by now. But I would have spared it. Okay. Brother Scott mentioned earlier about how vexed God is and he destroyed his people. Well, um, I know, um, Brother Scott, one time we were discussing about Exodus. And uh we, the family, yeah, the saying, well, more power, there's more responsibility. With great power, there's more responsibility. We've been in Exodus. Kind of similar, some, it's kind of similar. Um. And uh we see it involves Moses earlier. And uh we're gonna read here in um Exodus, chapter four, verse nineteen. Um, it was mandated, this is before the New Testament. We we all know that circumcision is a shadow of God cutting away your fallen nature to give you his banu resurrected divine nature. A circumcision that is a procedure not done by hands, but by God through Jesus. So let's read from verse eighteen, Exodus, chapter four, verse eighteen. Then Moses went back to Jethro, his father-in-law, and said to him, let me return to my own people in Egypt to see if any of them are still alive. Jethro said, go and I wish you well. Now the Lord had said to Moses and Midian, go back to Egypt, for all those who wanted to kill you are dead. So Moses took his wife and sons, put them on a donkey and started back to Egypt. And 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 he took the staff of God in his hand. So we we further um down. And uh, I gotta find that scripture. If I can find it, I know it's there um when Moses is um, when uh, I have to find it. I'm gonna look it up. His Moses's, uh Moses's wife was um very reluctant to do so. And she thought, she she accused him being a a man of blood. And um.
You talking about Exodus, chapter five?
Exodus, chapter what?
Exodus, chapter five.
Yeah, Exodus, chapter five. Okay, hold on when we get there. You'll find that verse.
I'm sorry, baby. I'm sorry, baby, bro. Exodus four twenty-five. Exodus.
All right. I know I was, I was, I was kind of close, but you know, thank you. Now we're hot. Exodus, chapter four, verse twenty-five. There we read, but Zipporah, okay, um. I'm gonna read it for, I'm gonna read um from verse twenty-one going down. The Lord said to Moses, when you return to Egypt, see that you performed before Pharaoh all the wonders I have given you. That I've given you the power to do. But I will his heart so that he will not let the people go. Then say to Pharaoh, this is what the Lord says. Israel is my firstborn son. And I told you, let my son go, so he may worship me. But you refuse to let him go, so I will kill your firstborn son. Nothing's done in vain. Anyway, that's another uh, that's another study in of itself. But at a lodging place on the way, the Lord met Moses and was about to kill him. But Zipporah took flint knife, cut off her son's foreskin and touched Moses's feet with it. Surely you are pride grimmer blood to me, she said. So the Lord let him alone. So even, we even see that God, he said to Balen, I I I would have killed you if it wasn't for your donkey. Man, Moses, if you didn't have, if you didn't, if you did not circumcise your sons, I would have killed you. So, you know, me, I'm cheap. Uh, we gotta be very serious, very diligent. Our life now is based on pleasing our father. That's all we're focused on. And I know there's distractions. I go through distractions. I go through obstacles and 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 challenges. Say, God, man, I have to raise my hand. Say, God, man, I have to raise my hand, I. Man, I surrender. I I I cannot do this on my own. I need. Your spirit. So I can be obedient. I mean, think about it. We can have all intellectual knowledge. I um I discussed this with Scott earlier. We can have all the intellectual knowledge. We can know this Bible front and back, inside out. But if your heart is not in line to obey the word, it's useless. It's futile. The devil knows the Bible from. From cover to cover. But he's not, his heart is not in line with the word. So what good is it? Oh, yeah, you can quote this scripture. Oh, yeah, you can quote that scripture. Oh, yeah, you know about this mystery. Oh, yeah, you know about this this of this prophecy. If you don't care about people. You don't care about God. It has no value. And as it's written in for thirteen. You're just a sounding gun. Listen, I'm kind of hungry. You know? Moses was going down the water with Jesus. Wha- what does that have to do with this person's in is in hunger? Why quoting scriptures like that? When we are out there. In this dark world. People can only see. Jesus when we show love. Knowledge puffs up, man. Don't get me wrong, you you need to have knowledge to have success. But if love is not the foundation. Knowledge is just futile. So yes. Servants of God, yeah. I'm pretty sure God tried to kill me many times. But by by God's grace. Been in many car accidents where I should have been. Going like that, no broken bones, I don't know. I give all glory to God. So yes, what I'm why I'm insisting, what I'm affirming, I'm asserting that everyone should take God really seriously. And it's not because we're oh. But we do it because. Now that we know that God has purchased us. We want. We wanna do your will. Yes, I I thank you for all you have done, all the provisions you have set out for me. All the plans you have for me. Planes to give me hope in the future. Pro- plans to prosper, not to harm me. I see that all things work together for the good. By grace. Thank you, Brother Scott, for that. So Exodus, remember Exodus chapter four verse twenty-five, okay? Remember that. So when Moses was kind of hesitant about circumcising his sons. And you know, you have people distracting you and trying to say, oh, what's the big deal? Why you why you so taking God so seriously? You yeah, cause God was about to kill me. But I didn't do his will. All right, so let's go back to the journey. In Numbers. So the donkey saw me and turned away from me these three times. If it had not turned away, I would certainly have killed you by now. But I would have spared it. Balaam said to the angel of the Lord, I I have sinned. I I didn't realize you were standing in the road to oppose me. Now, if you are displeased. I I I will go back. Then the angel of the Lord said to Balaam, go with the men. But speak only what I tell you. So Ba- I I I just, okay, before you like, okay, wait, you did wait, you just said. Don't go with them because they're summoning you. Now he's going with them and you said you're angry with him. But 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 and now you say go with them again? But God, I said before, knows your heart. Don't take these bribes to curse my people. Oh, you know, God will. He won't be. You know, if I just dabble in this and no, I won't take me, you know, be good, be so good, don't worry. Don't worry about it, don't stress it. We we are under grace. We don't want to use this grace as a license to sin. We're not using this freedom to indulge a flesh. So in this time of salvation, this day of grace. We want to focus on doing God's will. We want to walk obediently. Because we know that obedience is a reflection of love and we wanted to. Love. God. For what he's done for us. He first loved us. So when Belik heard. That Balaam was coming, he went to meet him at the Moabite town in the Aron border at the edge of his territory. Belik said to Balaam, did I not send you an urgent summons? Why don't you come to me? Am I really not able to reward you? Well, I came to you now, Balaam replied, but I I can't say whatever I please. I must speak only what God puts in my mouth. When Balaam went with Belik to uh. Um Curieth Huzzah. Belik sacrificed cattle and sheep and gave some to Balaam and the officials who were with him. The next morning, Belik took Balaam up to Bamath Baal. And from there he could see the outskirts of the Israelite's camp. Numbers chapter twenty-three. Balaam said, build me seven altars here and prepare seven bulls and seven rams for me. Belik did as Balaam said, and the two of them offered a bull and a ram on each altar. Then Balaam said to Belik, stay here beside your offering while I go aside. Perhaps the Lord will come to meet with me. Whatever he reveals to me, I will tell you. Then he went off to a barren height. God met with him and Balaam said. I I prepared seven altars and on each altar I've. Offered a bull and a ram. The Lord put a word in Balaam's mouth and said. Go back to Belik and give him his word. Give him this word. So he went back to him and found him standing beside his offering with all the Moabite officials. Then Balaam spoke his message. Belik brought me from Aaron, the king of Moab. From the eastern mountains. Come, he said. Cursed Jacob for me. Come denounce Israel. How can I curse those whom God has not cursed? How can I denounce those whom God has not denounced? From the rocky peaks I see them, from the heights I view them, I see a people who live apart. And do consider do not consider themselves one of the nations. Again, you want to translate, if you know, if you now you're biblically literate. You're being fed, you realize that I see a people who are holy. Who are set apart. We're unique. We're not like everybody else. We don't need a sense of belonging. Because we know that God has chosen us out of the world to be with him who is set up. Part. Who can count the dust of Jacob? There we go again with the dust. Brother Scott mentioned that. Meaning the people of Jacob, right? Who can count the dust of Jacob or number even a fourth of Israel? Let me die the death of the righteous and may my my final end be like theirs. Belik said to Balaam, what have you done to me? I brought you to curse my enemies, but you have done nothing but bless them. He answered, must I not speak what the Lord puts in my mouth? Second message. Then Belik said to him, come with me to another place where you can see them. You will not see them all, but only this. Only the outskirts of their camp and from there curse them for me. So he took him to the field of Zaphon on the top of Piska and there. He built seven altars and offered a bull and a ram on each altar. Balaam said to Belik, stay here beside your offering while I meet with them over there. The Lord met with Balaam and put a word in his mouth and said, go back to Belik and give him his word. So he went to him and found him standing besides his offering with the Moabite officials. Belik asked him, what did the Lord say? Then he spoke his message. Arise, Belik, and listen. Hear me, son of Zappor. God is not human, that he should not lie. Not a human being that he should change his mind. Does he speak then and not act? We'll stop right there. You want to make a transition. Go to first John chapter one. We see that the Old Testament. Walks hand in hand with the New Testament. The Old Testament is the New Testament concealed and the New Testament is the Old Testament revealed. He can't change his mind. He's not like shifting shadows. Let's go to first John chapter one, I think this is verse eight. First John chapter one verse eight. As a matter of fact, I'll. Let's read a little further up. I'm gonna start from verse five. First John chapter one verse five going down. This is the message we. And declare to you. God is light. In him there is no darkness at all. If we claim to have fellowship with him and yet walk in the darkness, we lie and do not live out the truth. But if we walk in the light as he is in the light, we have fellowship with one another and the blood of Jesus' son. Purifies us from all sin. If we claim to be without sin, we deceive ourselves and the. It's not in us. If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just and will forgive us our sins and purifies us from all unrighteousness. If we claim we have not sinned, we make him up to be a liar. And his word is not in us. God does not change his mind. God does not lie. If you see that you're convicted. Of your sins. Be a good cheer. You have Jesus Christ living inside of you. If you did not have the truth inside of you, you would not think twice about what you were doing. You'd be just like the walking dead indulging in the the pleasures of sin. Not even thinking twice about it. Well, everybody else does it. Not that bad. The truth is in you. You know what? I. I did exploit people to cater to my selfish desires. I had sex, I exploited women or vice versa. I I really did harm people. Not only that, I harmed myself. That's when you know the truth is in you. I only reap death. Yeah, I had sex with her. She had an abortion. I just reap death. Be careful. You know, when you see people like Belik. Trying to convince you to do. To curse her. Just to associate with them and they'll offer you, they'll that give you so many advances to lure your way. And uh. I would like to, I just just came to my mind, if you go to Proverbs chapter twenty-three. You know, we're warned. Don't give into gluttony. Don't try to seek money and think that money is gonna be the answer for all things because if you do. You're going to be enticed, you're going to be lured to do, you're gonna take bribes and then all of a sudden you're gonna see injustice come out. I'm gonna read Proverbs chapter twenty-three verse uh. I want I'm gonna read from the top. When you sit to dine with a ruler. Know well what is before you. And put a knife to your throat. If you're given to gluttony, do not crave his delicacies. So Balaam. Belik's delicacies, okay, is only for evil. Don't partake in that. Don't give into all the money and all the advancement he has to offer you. Do not wear yourself out to get rich. Do not trust in your own cleverness. Cast but a glance at riches and they are gone. For they will surely sprout wings and fly off to the sky like an eagle. Do not eat the food of a begrudging host. Do not crave his. For he is the kind of person who is always thinking about the cost. Eat and drink, he says to you, but his heart is not with you. You will vomit up the little you have eaten. And will have wasted your compliments. You see where this is going? Let's take a journey to uh first Timothy chapter six. And we're going to see. Why Abraham refused. Plunder from Sodom and Gomorrah. We're gonna realize. That if we do, we're gonna compromise the world. Because of greed. Money is good. But the love of money is evil. Be careful of that. And I know sometimes when we have painful trials. We want to hit that panic button. But let's read here. First Timothy chapter six verse ten. For the love of money. Is the root of all kinds of evil. Some people eager for money. Have wanted from the faith. And pierced themselves with many greaves. Oh, man, if I just put my money away, I I wouldn't have been broke. Oh, man, if I just did this and I misspent my money, just and he's just so obsessed with it. As mentioned earlier in this Bible study, don't let money have you. Don't let your car have you. Don't let your house have you. Remember. Who your blessed redeemer is. Things come and go in this world. But we want God. To be the foundation of our desire. To be the foundation of our awe. Our commitment. Don't pierce yourself with many greaves because, oh, man. If I had just made more money, we could have probably gotten this. We could have probably gotten that. We could have went on this trip here. Don't pierce yourself with those greaves. Don't. Oh, well, the Joneses went to uh uh went to Tahiti. I didn't even I wasn't even able to go. Man, I should have, I should have saved up. Stop. So we see that Belik is frustrated with Balaam. He's blessing him. The people of Israel. And he really wants them to curse him out of fear. No misfortune is seen in Jacob. This is verse twenty-one. So misery observes in Israel. The Lord their God is with them. The shadow of the king is among them. God brought them out of Egypt and they have the strength of a wild ox. There's no divination against Jacob, no evil omens against Israel. It will now be said to Jacob and is and of Israel, see what God has done? The people rise like lioness, like a lioness. They rouse themselves like a lion and and that does not rest till it devours its prey and drinks the blood of its victims. Then Belik said to Balaam, neither curse them at all nor bless them at all. Balaam answered, didn't I tell you I must do whatever the Lord says? Then Belik said to Balaam, come, let me take you to another place. Perhaps it will please God and let you curse them for me from there. And Belik took Balaam to the top of Pure, overlooking the wasteland. Balaam said to to Balaam said. Build me seven altars here and prepare seven bulls and seven rams for me. Belik did as Balaam had said and offered a bull and a ram on each altar. Numbers chapter twenty-four. "Now, when Balaam saw that it pleased the Lord to bless Israel, he did not resort to divination as at other times, but turned his face toward the wilderness. When Balaam looked out and saw Israel in camp, tribe by tribe, the Spirit of God came on him, and he spoke his message. The prophecy of Balaam's son Abior, the prophecy of the one whose eyes see clearly, the prophecy of one who hears the words of God, who sees the vision from the Almighty, who falls prostrate and whose eyes are opened. How beautiful are your tents, Jacob, your dwelling places, Israel! Like valleys they spread out, like gardens beside a river, like aloes planted by the Lord, like cedars beside the waters. Water will flow from their buckets; their sea will have abundant water. Their king will be greater than Agog; their kingdom will be exalted. God brought them out of Egypt. They have the strength of a wild ox; they devour hostile nations; they break their bones in pieces; with their arrows they pierce them, like a lion they crouch and lie down, like a lioness who dares to rouse them. May those who bless you be blessed, and those who curse you be cursed. Then Balak and the burnt against Balaam; he struck his hands together. He said them, 'I summoned you to curse my enemies, but you have blessed them these three times. Now leave it once and go home. I said I would reward you handsomely, but the Lord has kept you from being rewarded.'" Balaam answered, "Balak, did I not tell you the messages you sent me? Even if Balak gave me all the silver and gold in his palace, I could not do anything of my own accord, good or bad, to go beyond the command of the Lord, and I must say only what the Lord says. Now I'm going back to my people, but come, let me warn you of what this people will do to your people in the days to come." Now it's going back to him. Then he spoke the message, the prophecy of Balaam's son Abior, the prophecy of one whom, whose eyes sees clearly, the prophecy of one who hears the words of God, who has knowledge from the Most High, who sees the vision from the Almighty, who falls prostrate and whose eyes are opened. "I see him, but not now; I behold him, but not near. A star will come out of Jacob." Hmm, who is that star? "A star will come out of Jacob; a scepter will rise out of Israel. He will crush the foreheads of Moab, the skulls of the people of Shep. Edom will be conquered; Sera, his enemy, will be conquered; but Israel will grow strong; a ruler will come out of Jacob and destroy the survivors of the city." That star is Jesus. Then Balaam saw Amalek and spoke his message. Amalek was first among the nations, but there and will be an utter destruction. Then he saw the Canites and spoke his message. "Your dwelling place is secure; your nest is set in a rock; yet you Canites will be destroyed when Asher takes you captive." Balaam's seventh message. Then he spoke his message. "Alas, who can live when God does this? Strips will come from the shores of Cyprus; they will subdue Asher and Eber; but they will be, but they too will come to ruin." Then Balaam got up and returned home, and Balak went his own way. So we see that when you try to dig pits for people, you will fall on it. I know next, this is gonna be for next week's study, but now we see that the enemy always attacks from the outside, and then now he's gonna come from the inside. And we have to be careful when we are seduced, we're captivated by beauty. And I raise my hand. You gotta be on guard, because the enemy knows that if he can't get you this way, he's gonna try and make another strategy to corrupt you from inside. So be careful. You know, I know a lot of people, people say, "Well, you know, the church is full of hypocrites," but you know, you have to find a church. You have to find somewhere a church. Now, I'm not saying just a physical building, but you have to find brothers and sisters. There are stones that make up the church. You need to have fellowship. You need to pray for one another, because the seduction of the enemy will be more enticing. I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna sugarcoat things. I'm not gonna say, "Oh, you can be so strong. You're gonna, you're gonna be so weak, so vulnerable." Well, here's the beauty of it all. God wants you to see the power of His resurrection. The same power He used to raise Jesus from the dead is the same power He used by the Holy Spirit to help you resist temptation. And then we realize it's not from us. Lest we get puffed up, but we realize we have been delivered, and we've been granted repentance and mercy. If anyone has any questions, any concerns, please come to the table. If not, I understand. If you want to talk privately, want to call Scott, we're willing to to just share with you what God has shared with us. And again, you know, we're learning too. If you have any scriptures, if you have any thoughts that you can, you believe that will edify the body right now, tonight, feel free to, because this is what family's all about. I'm done, Brother Scott, and, uh, I, I'm just glad that uh, we are continuing this journey.
As am I. As am I. Um, like I repeatedly say to you, beloved, Brother Lyndon and I interchangeably are not just teachers. We're students, and oh my gosh, Brother Lyndon and I were powwow earlier today, and we were being edified on what we were sharing. And as we come sit down to the table tonight, like I told you, when Lyndon's at the front of the, at the front of the class, I have to knock somebody out of their front row seat, because I want to be right up under them. And, you know, when I get up to teach and Lyndon ain't quick enough, get the seat, and somebody grabs it, uh, he's gonna put him in a headlock and take that seat from him. And, um, you know, these studies are really, really, really blessing me, you know? Like I said, I've never seen the riches that lies within Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, you know? Um, the scripture says, "Every word of God is pure." So starting in the book of Genesis with the very, very first word that says, well, let me give you a little bit. In the beginning, all the way, and I mean all the way, to the last words that are said in the Old Testament, where it says, "Jesus Christ be with you all, amen." And every single word, verna, uh, word, verb, pronoun, adjective, conjunction, in between is a blessing to our soul. So please, like Lyndon was saying, don't find just a physical building to affiliate with, associate with. Find the true believers, because God has them scattered throughout the entire inhabited earth. He has faithful sons and daughters dispensing His word, edifying the brothers. Peter was charged, "Once you become strong, you go and strengthen your brothers." Brother Lyndon and I have become strong, so we're turning around strengthening each other and strengthening the brethren. So again, please let these studies bless your hearts and soul, because our endgame, our endgame is for all of us to be in either paradise, on earth, or in heaven. That's our objective. That's our endgame. Now, I listen to, um, different ones as I go about my travels, and I'll hear them say, you know, "I picked this job so I can get a good pension. I'll pick that job so I can have good medical. I'll pick that job because, you know, it has an upstanding value in the community, or I picked this job because they got a high, uh, per hour rate." Well, beloved, pick the Bible so that you can have life inhabited more abundantly. Please. As Brother Lyndon so beautifully brought out, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ did lose His children. Remember, the entire creation is His. So our Bible says in Ezekiel, "All souls are mine." And that "all souls" means the Jeffrey Dahmers, the Ted Bundys, the Idi Amin's, as well as the Abrahams, Isaacs, and Jacobs. All these souls belong to God and to the Lord Jesus Christ. And Jesus lost His children. He lost His children to that satanic one. But oh my, He's out there gathering them. He's out there gathering them to bring His children into His kingdom. So please, beloved, as you address yourself as being a Christian, study to show thyself approved, and you get out there and you lasso and you rope in some Christian sons and daughters for the Father Kingdom, so it could be accounted worthy to your account. He gave you one talent, you turn around and multiply that talent. He gave you two, four, and five talents, you multiply it. Don't take that talent and say, "Well, I know that God is harsh, because I see how, I see what He did to His children," and numbers, oof, He wiped them out like there was chalk on a, uh, on a blackboard, and when the teacher takes that, that eraser, ooh, and just wipes them out. So He's a mean taskmaster. I'm not gonna try to get any people coming up under Him. That's wrong thinking. You see, when my mother chastised me, she did it because she loved me. She never beat Ernie. Well, Leo. My mother never even chastised him verbally. But boy, did she lay... My mother took her elbow, got up to the top of the rope, and she did a suplex. And boy, did I feel it. Why? Because she loves me. Remember, God doesn't discipline the devil's children. He'll destroy them. And speaking of destruction, the ones that God destroyed in Numbers, they're eligible for hell. When Aaron didn't, was not allowed to enter into the promised land, God didn't kill Aaron. Aaron died of old age, if I may be allowed to use that term. God will allow Aaron into His kingdom. There is a difference. Jesus says in Luke, chapter 12, verse 5, "I will tell you whom you will fear: fear the one who after he has killed has the power to cast into hell." So beloved brethren, I hope this gives us a better understanding, because there are those out there who dispute as to the state of Ananias and Sepira. We know that the Holy Spirit killed them. Once again, he who God kills, remember 1 Chronicles, chapter 10, God said, "I slew Saul." Anyone that God kills is eligible for hell. Those He allows to die, His faithful ones, they're eligible for His kingdom. So again, please keep in mind, the ones that God opened up the earth and swallowed up, the ones He killed, He allowed the Levites to kill with the golden calf, the fourteen plus thousand that He killed in between Numbers, chapters thirteen through fifteen, these are the ones that God has made eligible for hell, because they died what? They died in their sins. The ones that the serpent bit, why did those serpents bite these people? Because they were rebelling and grumbling against God. Listen to what they said. Listen to what they have said with their own mouth. Listen to Numbers, chapter 21, verse 7. "Therefore the people came to Moses and said, 'We have sinned; for we have spoken against the Lord and against thee. Pray unto the Lord that he take away the serpents from us,' and Moses prayed for the people." So when these ones were bitten and died, that's because they sinned against God. If you died in your sins, you are finished. If God kills you, please keep in mind, "they who God kills," what did Jesus say in Luke, chapter 12, verse 5? Please, turn to it if you're able, and if you're not, or as you'll turn to it, let me read what our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ clearly says. "But I will forewarn you whom you shall fear: fear him which after he has killed hath power to cast into hell. Yea, I say unto you, fear him." Fear God, beloved. I have a coworker that says, "Nah, you're not supposed to fear God." Wrong. The fear of the Lord is the beginning of what? Wisdom. You fear God, because He's the mighty potentate. And if you don't fear Him, you are a fool. As Brother Lyndon opened up and said, "Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Please bring them to the table." And again, as he said, "If you have none, um, you can contact me, or, and if you would like Brother Lyndon to chime in as well, you know, say, 'Brother Scott, I have a question for you and Lyndon,'" I'll get Lyndon on the horn, so that we can, um, multiply this thing. So without further ado, beloved brethren, we're gonna bring tonight's study to a close. We're gonna have our little sister and daughter, Giovanna, bring tonight's study to a close. Giovanna, bring us to the throne of mercy, baby.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We bless my family. I wish they stay safe, and thank you for all the blessings that we have. And please forgive each and one of us of our sins and shortcomings. And please bless us all to be safe as we sleep tonight, and please bless us to be all safe as we go out tomorrow. And thank you for allowing us to have a wonderful Bible study this evening, and please bless us to have many more wonderful Bible studies in the future. And thank you for all the blessings that you've given upon to us. And please forgive the world of their sins and shortcomings. Either they know that they did it, or they didn't. In Jesus, in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Amen. So beloved brethren, um, remember, we're gonna tune into that same back station, same back channel, and listen to the word of our God, our Father, the sovereign Lord Jesus Christ. Good night, and love to y'all from the Masons, as well as the foster household to each and every one of y'all's households. Good night.
The journey continues.